I'm Nick Armstrong and you're watching Dear Fort Collins, a podcast featuring the people that make Fort Collins a wonderful place to live. This series of episodes is all about the election that's happening in November 2025. And we're interviewing all of the different candidates for mayor, city council, and PSD school board. And we want to hear from them in their own words about why they're running, what they care about. And you then can be more informed about who you're voting for when it's time to fill out your ballot. With ranked choice voting, it's really difficult to know sometimes who your candidates are and what order you're going to rank them in. So I hope these series of episodes really help you figure out which candidates best align with your interests and needs. And as we do these interviews, I want you to know that I have given the candidates access to the questions in advance. I try to ask all of the candidates the same questions, or at least give them an opportunity to answer the same questions in the same kind of way. And there's very minimal editing on any of these episodes. So unless there was an errant sneeze or a cat jumping on someone's lap, you're hearing from the candidates in their own words. I do have a quick disclaimer to give you that I serve on the Parks and Recreation Board for the City of Fort Collins. And my opinions on this show are my own. They're not the position of the board or of the city. And I have also advised a number of the candidates about their campaigns, and in some cases have either helped with their campaigns or made a donation here or there. I do my absolute best to make sure that they all get fair treatment, that there aren't any favorites being played, and that also we're asking them the same types of questions, and they have an opportunity to answer those in kind. I hope that you enjoy these episodes and that they help you become a more informed voter in the upcoming election. And if you do have any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know. And reach out on the Dear Fort Collins website. I'm always happy to hear from you. And some of the questions that you'll hear me ask of the candidates have been submitted by listeners and watchers just like you, folks who are fans of the show and want to know more about particular candidates and their positions on particular things. So with that, let's get on with the show. This episode, we have Chris Conway, who is a candidate for District One, my district. How you doing, Chris?
Pretty good, Nick. How you doing?
I'm good. Thank you. Welcome to the show.
Thanks. Thank you for having me.
So tell us about your campaign. How did you decide to run for office?
Yeah, so I grew up here in Fort Collins, actually in the northeast part of town. So I went to Tavelli, Lincoln, and Pooter. Grew up just, I grew up just behind Tavelli Elementary. And I've been a teacher here for the last seven years. And a few years ago, I got really concerned about housing affordability. I had seen so many people that I knew, you know, just friends, coworkers, former students, they were struggling to afford to stay in the city that, you know, I had grown up in, that I really care about. And so I, you know, I started a group called YMB Fort Collins, that's Yes in My Backyard Fort Collins, that, you know, does grassroots work trying to make housing more affordable. And we've done a lot of work both at the city and the state level. And so I decided to run for office to kind of make sure that Fort Collins stays a place that's affordable for everyday people, for young families, for seniors who are wanting to age in place, all those kinds of things. And so it's really been about delivering materially for the people of Fort Collins and making sure that people can stay in the place that they love.
You talked about your experience starting YMB and some state level experience. What do you, what other experience do you bring to the table? What do you do?
Yeah, so I'm a teacher here in town. I teach English over at Ridge View, which is over on LeMay and Stewart's, actually in the district too. So I teach kids how to read and write, you know? At some level, it's as simple as that. So that, that brings me into contact with lots of different people, you know, across the city, parents. And, you know, it's just the best job in the world, in my opinion. It's just, you get to sit around and read books with kids and talk about what you love about them. And they get, they teach you so much about, you know, about the books and about life. And so I, it's a, it's a great job, too. So I'm glad to be doing that.
What makes you specifically qualified to represent District One?
Well, like I said, like, I grew up here. So, you know, I feel like I know it as, as well as anyone, as I've been knocking doors up in the district, especially, you know, in the northeast, the far northeast part of town, which I think gets a little slept on sometimes. I know you live up there in Maple Hill, too, right? I grew up right behind Tavelli, so I know every little back way to get to Old Town or get to the Pooter River. And I think that gives you just a different perspective on what it means to, to serve the people of Fort Collins. I think the other thing that makes me, you know, qualified to serve is just that I've had, I have a lot of experience, you know, working with city leaders and leaders at the state on a variety of different types of legislation. So I'm really proud of the work I've done trying to, you know, get rid of U plus two in the city. I'm proud of the work we've done to promote, you know, climate-friendly, sustainable, transit-oriented development at the state level. And so I think you see that reflected in the ways that so many leaders in the Democratic Party have endorsed my campaign. So, you know, Representative Andy Basenekker and Yara Okai and, you know, so many city council members and county commissioners and stuff. And so I'm really proud of the work I've done at different levels. And so I think that, that experience, and then also just, you know, I, I know people of all different ages and backgrounds in the city. And I've kind of gone through a lot of that. So like, I have an aging parent in the city who I'm helping take care of. And that's an experience that really has shown me a lot about, you know, in my case, for, for my dad, like, mental health, the mental health facility in the city, the challenges that older folks face finding housing and accommodations. But also, you know, I understand what it's like for young families, and then also being a young professional. So I feel like I have a lot of experiences over the years that give me a little peek into what it's like for a wide variety of different types of people in Fort Collins.
So I guess that begs the question, what does Fort Collins mean specifically for you?
Well, kind of everything. I mean, it's my, it's my home. It's where I grew up. It's where, you know, so many of the people I love, you know, live here. You know, it's where I met my fiance. It's, it's where my career's been. It's, it's just, it's kind of everything to me. And I just think it's, it's, it's the best place to live, you know? It's the best place to grow up. It's the best place to raise a family. And so, yeah, I'm, I just think it, it's central to my life to make sure that Fort Collins is, is the best it can be and that, you know, people can afford to live here.
Knowing that city council can set its own priorities, and sometimes there's a huge laundry list of those, and sometimes there's just a few, can you talk about a specific project or issue that you'd like to tackle first or advocate for first?
Oh, yeah. Well, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna get bored of me saying this over and over again in this podcast, I think. But I am like relentlessly focused on affordability in the city. Like, I think the city does such a good job on so many issues, right? Like, our natural areas, our parks, our trails networks are incredible. Although I have some, you know, we'll talk a little bit about the northeast part of town, which I think there's, there's some work to be done there on trails especially. But I think the city has so many amazing qualities, but the, you know, and it's an amazing place to live. But it's no longer available to the same range of people that it used to. You know, like, when I was growing up, we always used to joke, right, that like, we never wanted to be the way Boulder was, where a regular family who wanted to, to raise kids, or who wanted to, you know, age gracefully somewhere that was beautiful and sustainable, we never wanted to be like Boulder, where that was only available for people who were rich, right? And sadly, that's the direction we've been heading, especially over the last six or seven years, although it's certainly a longer term trend than that. And so if I was elected, I would make it much easier to build the kinds of housing people want to live in. So that's, that's going to be all different kinds of housing. So it could be, you know, apartment buildings around transit for younger, you know, younger folks who are going to CSU. But it could also be smaller starter homes for families or senior communities, all of the above, right? And so what I would want to do is make sure that we are making it easy to build the kinds of homes people want to live in. So for me, specifically, I think bringing down, and this is going to make people's eyes please over a little bit, but making it faster, like, right now, to build housing, right? So right now, it takes two years often to even get the entitlements to start building a project. And that's just way too long, right? Especially as a teacher, two years, and these kids are starting to grow. I've seen these, all of a sudden, my 10th graders that I was teaching are now graduating, and then they're almost graduating from college a couple of years later. And it's like, kids don't have time to wait for us to kind of get our act together. They need, they need stuff now, so that when, when my students are graduating and finding places to live on their own, they can, they can live in those places. So that would be my first priority, is making it easier to build all kinds of housing, affordable housing especially.
What do you see is the city's role in helping to advance the affordable housing solutions that you're proposing?
Yeah, so there's, the city mainly plays, the, the role the city plays has a lot to do with what it allows, right? So zoning being a major one, right? In most, in like 75% of the city, all you can build is the most expensive housing type, which is single family homes. And, you know, we need lots more single family homes as well, and that's amazing. But we should be allowing more diverse housing types across the city. You know, if, if people often wonder like, what, what that might look like in different neighborhoods. But I think the best model is right here in Fort Collins, and it's one that people are familiar with, right? Like, Old Town is a place where you have all different types of housing right next to each other, and it doesn't feel out of place, and it doesn't feel bad when you're walking around. Like, it just feels normal to see duplex and a four apartment built, little four unit apartment thing, and single family home, and a place with an ADU in the back, and accessory dwelling unit in the back. These things are all just super normal. And I think that should be more available in more parts of the city. So the, the city needs to change its zoning rules. It needs to change its permitting process. It needs to change. It's the way it charges people fees, right? Like, one of the things I like, one of the examples I like to use all the time is, right, like, if you want to build a backyard casita for your aging parent, and you want to build that, the city is going to charge you about $25,000 in impact fees for the right to do that. And that is way out of scale with the kind of impact that your grandma's going to have on the local park to the police department. Just to be frank, like, grandma's not using that many resources when she's living back there. And so there's no reason to charge that much money. Like, if you were to build a little, like, man cave back there that had like a pool table, they would charge you almost nothing. They'd charge you like a thousand bucks or something. But as soon as somebody, as soon as you want to house a relative that you care about back there, they're going to charge you $25,000. And that doesn't make a whole lot of sense for the, for the exact same structure. And so those are the kinds of things we need to do to get out of, the city just needs to, to make that cheaper and quicker and easier. So.
Do you feel like the affordable housing solutions that you've proposed can also work hand in hand with some of the sustainability and climate action goals that the city has espoused over the last few years?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I mean, that is like 100%. This is the most important climate solution that we have in the city, right? Is like, right now, we are pushing, we have policies that make it hard to build in town, and that pushes people into surrounding communities, which is really bad for our sustainability goals. So I'll give you a really clear example right now. So my friend Brianna, who I work with, who I coach soccer with at the school that I work at, she actually went to the school that I teach at, where her mom is the school counselor. She grew up in town, and when she graduated, she went and finished college and decided to come back. And now to the school that she grew up in. So now she's the second grade teacher at the school. And when her and her husband were looking for a place to live, all they could find that they could afford was in Greeley. So now she's driving 45 minutes into work each day. And it's just a disaster for the environment, right? That, that is, she, she is living in a newer neighborhood that, that consumes some, you know, land that would have been farmland or natural areas, right? She drives long distances, and that, that causes our climate emissions to go up. She, that's, if you're, if you're wondering why traffic's so bad on Harmony, it's because we push people out into Weld County. And so it's through no fault of her own, through, through Fort Collins enacted policies, like, we're pushing up climate change in these ways. So we need to be able to make it much easier to build right here in town, where people can walk and bike and take transit to work and, you know, take shorter car track trips. And so all these things kind of work together. And it's, it's a real opportunity for a win-win. Like, it's so rare to have an, to have a policy where it's like, well, this is going to be free. It's gonna make housing, it's gonna make us all wealthier by letting, it would be more construction jobs, cheaper housing, and it's going to be a big win for the environment. So it's like this, it's this kind of unique opportunity to have like win-win-win policies. We just need to, you know, take it.
So on that same token, how will you approach water and growth planning for some of these planned issues?
Great point. I mean, the, the price of water in Fort Collins is growing, and it's a huge thing that we need to think about always, especially in the West. What I will say is that, you know, over the last 25 years, what we've seen is that as communities have grown across the Front Range, water usage has actually come down per capita enough so that oftentimes places with more population are using less water. And I don't even think we've scratched the surface in terms of water conservation. Like I said, those kinds of sprawl developments are the most water intensive projects that we have, and infill is the least water intensive projects. And so we've really been making it harder on ourselves to, 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 to use the amount of water that we want to be using and to use it efficiently. That said, climate change is coming, and there's going to be less water. And that means we need better water storage in the future to make sure that we have enough to go around, especially in times of drought, because the, how, that we're going to have drier years than we've had in the past. And so we absolutely need to be investing in infrastructure that's going to be able to handle those kinds of years, basically.
What do you make of the, the city's water efficiency plan that was just released?
I think it's a good start, but I think that we need to, I think it needs to be paired with the other policies in the city, like I've just said, right? Like, my frustration with some of the ways that the city deals with some of these policies is that one part of the city is kind of pushing for one thing, and then the other part of the city is not, is not, you know, kind of working towards those same goals. So I think a lot about things like, I think a lot about times about, like, the transit goals that we have all the time. Like, we have these great, we had this Max Line investment that we did, and we're seeing problems with people not riding transit enough in Fort Collins. But then we don't make it ea, but then we don't make it easy to build infill around transit stations. And so we see that these plans aren't followed through in a holistic way across the city. So I'd like, what I'd like to see is that the city, you know, thinks seriously about, like, okay, if, if increased transit use or water efficiency is, is our goal, like, where are all the other levers in the city that we can pull to, to affect these policies in the most efficient way? And right now, I think sometimes there's a little bit of siloing between city departments that doesn't always make it easier to find solutions.
So speaking about traffic, what strategies do you suggest to improve traffic flow and safety around the city?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think we need to make it easier to get people, you know, to bike around the city and to use transit if we can, like, and that's one thing. So like, I bike to work every day, and that's one car off the road for everybody else. And so that's extending our trail network into, especially the growing parts of District One and the northeast of Fort Collins is absolutely vital. Like, if you're north of College and east of, or if you're north of Mulberry and east of LeMay, right, it is not always easy to get into Old Town or to get to the Pooter River by trail. And so we need to be expanding the trail access, the, the trail network immediately into those places. And that's a huge one. I also think that we just need to have better collaboration between the city and the county, right? Like, frankly, I think, especially in the northeast part of town, as I've been talking to voters, there's been a problem where, because the city and the county is kind of like interspersed in these various areas, nobody wants to take responsibility for those road, roads. And, you know, the county feels like, well, we're about to give over this part of land to you. We don't want to do a bunch, pay a bunch of money to do a bunch of road upgrades, right? And the city feels like, well, we don't want to take all the cost of all these road upgrades. And the people who ultimately are hurt are the people in District One, right, who are left with poor road infrastructure. And so I'd really like to see traffic upgrades along Timberline, along Vine, that make it safer and more efficient to get around the city. So those are, those are huge ones to me, I think. And they're ones that are really pertinent to the people in northeast Fort Collins, that, that, that deserve better infrastructure than they have right now, to be frank.
Yeah, I'd echo some of those sentiments is, you know, as I ran a few years ago on, on a very similar platform, my, my feel was that there's a real education issue of who owns what and why. The county had just proposed, and it failed on the ballot, a massive infrastructure fund that folks didn't know which roads were being impacted by. And Country Club Road, which is one of the primary, from any of these new neighborhoods, whether that's Montavo, or, you know, Maple Hill, Richards Lake, any of these folks that send their kids to school to Tavelli, that's, that's the road that folks will use.
Yep.
And to have that as a car-only, non-trail, non, you know, pedestrian, anything friendly avenue is catastrophic to the, the outcomes of the city up here. It also makes affordability that much more hard to attain, just because if you have one car, you're not able to get people back and forth. So my question is, there's a lot of these infrastructure issues, and it sounded like you were making reference also to the Mulberry Corridor annexation and some of the Bloom development. A lot of the things that have held up some of the trail planning in this space are that the idea that development has to pay its own way, and that without water, in particular, things like Montavo are really hard to get moving forward. And at the same time, you have a lot of folks that are maybe pushing back against growth, or saying, well, the infrastructure needs to hook up with these things. What do you believe is Fort Collins' biggest infrastructure challenge? And how do you address all those competing needs with regard to things like growth planning, trails, and not, also not being able to build because water rights can't be procured?
Yeah, well, the water one's going to be tough. I mean, that, that one's going to be one that's a bigger conversation. But in terms of infrastructure, I mean, I'm glad you brought up Country Club Road, because like, I grew up right there, off of, off of Country Club Road, behind Tavelli, right behind Tavelli Elementary. And that was like, my way to get around as a kid. Like, I would jump on my bike, go down that little side path in Country Club Road to my friend's house who lived over at Falcon Hill. And it was, it's sketchy sometimes, right, to get around. It's not, it does not feel safe, especially now that they've closed the ditch over there. I think, this is where I think, growing up in that area, I think it's going to be the kind of thing where we need to invest our resources where we think our values are, right? Like, if we care about being a world-class bike city, we can't leave out a quarter of the city because we're waiting on a development project that may or may not come out into the future because of water costs that are, you know, out of our control in some ways. So we need to invest money into infrastructure to deliver for the people of northeast Fort Collins. Like I said, this is the thing where the city, the county, the developers are all kind of battling each other so that nobody has to, is left with the, you know, the bill or whatever. But to me, as somebody who grew up there and who really cares about this community, like, I don't really give a crap, you know, who, you know, how we're going to fight about this in the end, right? Like, we need to deliver for these people, and we need to do that by investing money. So in the Trails Plan that they just put out, you know, they talked about an accelerated timeline for delivering on these trails. And it's just a matter of investing the money to do it. And frankly, I think the people of northeast Fort Collins deserve to have that investment made in them, because they're not getting access to the amenities that other people in the city are getting. And so I think Country Club Road is a huge one. I think opening up, trying to get an easement along some of those canals is a huge one to me. Safe bike lanes through what will be Bloom, through, from places like Mosaic, Water, Trailhead, and Water Glen, to, through those neighborhoods, to Old Town, right? We need to figure out an easement through the old airport. Like, there's, there's really specific things we need to do, but it's going to require a city council person who's willing to stand up and be like, this is a priority, and I'm going to push and push and push, and work and work and work with county commissioners and various canal companies and ditch companies, et cetera, and just get it done, right? Because I don't, I don't think the representation that we have now is really pushing in the way that we need, right? And advocating for Fort Collins in the way that we need.
So what do you think the voter education role plays in that? Because I hear you advocating for funding. And I know that with the ballot initiatives that Laramie County has proposed, that there was a disconnect between, well, why am I, I'm in the city, like, I have my stuff, why do I need to pay for extra stuff? And the funding, the accelerated timeline that you mentioned from the Strategic Trails Plan comes specifically from CCIP and the inclusion of that. Knowing that we also have these other competing interests of like, well, affordable housing was, you know, the, the request was utilize all of the money that was left over from CCIP instead of putting it to the Southeast Rec Center, which was a, the Planned Priority Community Engagement Process, all of these things went into determining how to put some of that money in there. Asking for, you know, 10 million, 24 million, all of these other things that city councils throw into affordable housing, like, knowing that these are competing priorities, and that you have vested interest also in affordable housing, as you've said.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you plan to make those distinctions between those, those different levers that you can pull?
Well, I think, I think, I think we're going to have to just deliver on both of these things at the same time, right? Like, I think the way we can help with affordable housing the most, to be honest, more, like, the money is really important from the CCIP to affordable housing. But I think more important to affordable housing, frankly, is just making the process at the city less Byzantine, faster and more efficient, and more, more predictable, to be frank, right? Like, if you have a project that is going to deliver affordable housing for low-income seniors, or young families, or teachers, you need to be getting through the process quickly and efficiently. That is more important than funding a lot of times. I mean, the funding is important, too. And so that, that will leave us with a lot more money to invest in trails. And so I think those are the kinds of ways we can get more efficient. I mean, part of it is that, you know, sales tax in Fort Collins is declining as a share of the total county sales tax. And that's in part because, just like the story I told about my friend Brianna earlier, it's because we're pushing people out of the city and into the county, where they spend their money in businesses that are not in Fort Collins. And so the, the more we can direct investment into Fort Collins, the, the easier the financial picture gets into the future. And then we have a lot more money to invest in everybody. It's one of the things that drives me crazy about the housing conversation all the time. It's that the costs of making it hard and difficult to build get hidden. You don't see the lost sales tax revenue that we get. You don't see the increased climate, the failure to reach our climate goals because we're delaying infill housing projects. You don't see the, the threat to schools, frankly, that comes from making neighborhoods, from, from putting neighborhoods in amber forever, right? Like, and then the people who are pushing against housing don't have to reckon with the trade-offs, right? And then we all get left fighting amongst ourselves for competing priorities, when in fact, we can have an abundance of all these things if we just make the right rules in place. And so the, the scarcity that we have is a choice that the city's made. And I think it's been a huge mistake. And so I'd like to remedy that so that we don't have to face these kinds of budget trade-offs in the way that we do, right? Or at least make the trade-offs easier into the future, right? And so, yeah, that makes, I think, thinking about these things at the onset in a holistic way is really important. So like, we need to think of be, be thinking about the opportunity cost of not delivering on certain projects over time, so that we can avoid these budget trade-offs, frankly.
So along with that, the, making Fort Collins a future-friendly place to live, stable for artists, creatives, all of those things.
Yes.
And especially nonprofits. What role do you think the city should play in supporting the arts and especially programs and organizations that aren't officially part of the city initiatives?
Yeah, so I think Fort Collins has an incredible art scene that, you know, I just know so many great artists and places that artists gather, right? Like, I think of the Lyric, I think of Wolverine Farms, I think of even Comic, like Comic Con is an amazing thing that I know that you have a central role in putting on. I think we have, you know, I was just at Tour de Fat this weekend, and it was just incredible to see like the outpouring of creativity that people have. I mean, what I'd like to see is that, I'd like the city, a lot of times what artists need, in my opinion, is just like, the space and the visibility to do what they want to do without, without getting impeded, right? And so I think the city should think about, like, where do we have spaces that we can turn over to people who are creative and who want to make the city beautiful and interesting so that they can make their vision a reality? And I think a lot about also just about, you know, making it easier to get smaller grants for smaller organizations outside the city. I just want to call out one group, two here today, which is this group called Sound Effects, that goes around and does this, they, they play in, like, for seniors in senior homes across the city. And they do these amazing concerts for people. And my dad is living in one of those communities, Morning Star, right now. And the way it affects people to see, to hear music get played live in front of them, to hear people singing in front of them, it's just incredible. They also do this thing called Shine On at the Lyric, where, you know, they have, they work, they bring in, you know, a lot of people with disabilities, and, 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 and do music and karaoke. and, 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 and do music and karaoke. And it's just like this incredible thing. So I think we really need to make, make ourselves available to help those kinds of groups as a city. And then frankly, sometimes I think the city can get caught up in, in kind of too, like being too particular about different rules and things like that, when somebody's doing something creative, when the city should be thinking like, when somebody's doing something creative, like how are we going to help them? Not like what exact rule is being followed in a given time. So like I, I remember back during the pandemic, the founder of Comet or Music City, like he just started making dumplings for people out of his backyard and people would come and he would like post on Instagram or Facebook like, hey, I made these dumplings today. Come and get them. People would come enroll in. And then like nine months into a pandemic where everyone was, you know, trapped inside. Here was this outdoor socially distanced way of like, you know, sparking community in the city and the city like ended up shutting it down because of various rules and things like this. And it was just like, I, I don't know, I don't know who that's helping. And so we need to be like open to when opportunities like that arise to be like, all right, what are the rules? And then what, is shutting this thing down like actually going to further the, the reason we wanted these rules or is it going to, is it going to hurt them? So I think that's the kind of like creativity and kind of openness to collaboration that we need in the city.
So speaking of community, uh, what is your understanding of the needs of the LGBTQ plus residents and visitors in Fort Collins?
Yeah. So, um, I think that everybody in Fort Collins, uh, needs to feel like safe, well, welcome and, and able to thrive in the city. I mean, I think given the national climate, there's a lot of fear in that community and a lot of uncertainty about what's going to happen in the future. So the city needs to be, you know, on its toes and aware of what's going on nationally so that we can, can react and, and, um, and respond. But I think, um, a lot of what we need to do is, is, is do a better job of communicating what resources there are out there. So in talking to people on the, uh, gender inequity board, you know, there's, when people move into town, um, who are queer or are, uh, trans, you know, it's not always clear how to find resources, right? So which doctors can provide gender-affirming care? Where do you, where are safe, friendly spaces? Where can you find a bathroom that affirms your gender identity and that kind of thing? So we need, I think we need to develop a kind of a centralized resource for those, um, kinds of, um, you know, needs that people have. I also think that, you know, a lot of times, um, given that people are going to be coming from red states where policies aren't as friendly and as inclusive, like this is where the affordable housing argument comes back again, right? Like we can't be a welcome, the welcoming and inclusive community that we want to be. If you need a half a million dollars to come live here, right? Like frankly, um, and so, uh, this is why I'm proud of having supported, you know, efforts in the past like ending U plus two, which discriminated almost explicitly against our, you know, our queer community where people are defining their families in ways that weren't acknowledged in the city's rules around what a family was and what a family meant. And so what you saw was queer, trans individuals who are making their own families, uh, were being evicted at high rates. And, and that's why you see, you know, this is part of a much larger nexus of why you see so much, you know, distrust in, in that, in that community sometimes towards the city.
Changing gears a little, this is our first major election using ranked choice voting. And in District One in particular, this is going to come into play. How do you plan to appeal to voters who may not choose you as their first choice?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I just, I'll just tell them what my values are and tell them who I am and why I care about Fort Collins. And then hope that they, even if they're not going to pick me as their first choice, they, they have some other preference, um, that they'll, you know, think about voting for me second. So like, if, you know, if you're frustrated that your rent's too high, you should consider putting me second, right? If you're frustrated that your adult children can't raise their, your, um, you know, their, your grandkids in the city, you should consider ranking me second, right? If you're frustrated, um, that trails aren't being extended up to the northeast part of the city, you should, um, consider ranking me second. And, and so I would just, I would just talk about, um, the positive things that I want to bring to Fort Collins and then hope that that's enough to attract some people who, you know, have some other reason to put somebody else first.
Are there any voter groups or views that you're intentionally not seeking to court or be associated with?
I mean, I would never court votes from people who promote hate or, um, other sorts of discrimination. You know, sadly that happens in Fort Collins from time to time and, 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 you know, and it pops up, pops its ugly head up. And so I would, I would never accept support from anybody like that.
But as we saw with, uh, the District Six race not too long ago, that that is something that our, our community really never dealt with, I would say. We, we never followed up on it. It just was like, cool, uh, that individual lost. And now we've kind of, let's just move on. Like no, let's have the conversation.
Yeah. I mean, just for your listeners, what happened is, uh, somebody named Alexander Adams ran in District Six and he had started a white supremacist group at CSU. And I'll just, I mean, I just want to put the elephant in the room out there, right? Like my opponent, Susan Gatauski, supported Alexander Adams. She donated to him his campaign and supported him all the way through, and she kept his past a secret. To me, that is not, uh, Fort Collins values. I think it's really, um, a horrible thing to do. And so I, that's part of the reason I'm running as well.
And I think that how we address that as a community, what we, what we look at in terms of what conversations we need to be having, like, how did a white supremacist decide to run for city council? And, and the, the thing that they were concerned about was asking, you know, like, oh, is this, is my, my past gun position paper going to be, uh, antithetical to being a city? Like, no, the, the white supremacy is the problem, dude. That's the, the one issue that we probably should be discussing.
Your, your, I, your, your, your article disparaging black IQ was the issue and the fact that people decided to support him regarding, knowing, you know, full well that those were his ideas and those were his values and that he had never come clean about them was frankly, yeah, very, just very upsetting and been very disappointing, uh, in my opinion. So.
It was problematic across the board. And from that point on, we had, uh, political appointees, you know, hitting each other back and forth, you know, it's just not, not a, elected officials shouldn't be doing that. There should be some sort of like, hey, this is, why don't we use this platform? And I was, I, in, in defense of people who decide to run for city council, this is a tough, this is a tough thing. And there's opportunities to step in it. That one was particularly egregious. And we're like, obviously if you are a white supremacist, maybe don't run for office. That would be a step one. But the, the, the issue of what do you do if that comes to light? And you have truly disavowed those beliefs.
Sure.
In my view, should have been use the platform because you running, I've run, like, there's so many of us who have been in this spot where it's like, if you have a platform and a voice and you've done harm and you disavow that harm, you can then turn that platform into the, the place to repair that harm.
Oh, absolutely. And there was no, there was no apologies to the communities that had been disparaged and affected. There was no reckon, there was no, um, kind of reckoning with why that had happened. There was no like, here's how to avoid getting radicalized, this kind of thing, none of that. It was all hiding and secrets. And, and so, yeah, I'm, I, I hope that we can turn a chapter on this frankly, in, in this, uh, city election. And, uh, yeah, I mean, frankly, in District Three, we're seeing similar things, right? Like, there is a candidate who said some pretty disparaging remarks about, uh, the Iranian-American community that Yara Zakaya represents. And so I, I'm hoping that we can get past this in Fort Collins and really, you know, um, move to a much more progressive and much more inclusive future.
Well, uh, I guess on that note.
Well, we really, yeah. Do you want to ask me about coffee shops and?
No, I was, the, the, the next question on my list is what would voters be surprised to learn about, about you? And if you don't have anything off the top of your head, what, what was your weirdest job?
My weirdest job? Well, okay. One of my jobs in high school here was actually, I would dance on the corner of, um, of Mountain and College in one of those like Statue of Liberty uniforms to get the, to get people to come to the tax place or whatever. When I was in high school, that was like one of my first jobs. And so that was one of my weirdest Fort Collins jobs. So I don't know if they don't do that anymore. I don't think, but for years they had.
They're out there. Yeah.
Are they out there? Okay. They're still out there. Okay. That's good. Okay. So I did that for a while.
So worthwhile and honorable position, I think, to bring, bring cheer to people is the Statue of Liberty.
Absolutely. I thought my moves were pretty good, to be frank. So.
Honestly, there needs to be this, the sign spinners on the side of the road. And just like the, a competition between them would be, that's the height of entertainment.
We're bringing arts to Fort Collins, you know?
It's a grant. I'm going to apply for a grant for that. Um, if, if you could have any superpower to help your community, what would it be?
Oh my gosh, that is such a hard one. What would it be? It would be to make the trains, um, you know, it would be to instantly make train tracks underground so that we could just not be blocked in traffic or not be woken up at night with these blasting trains. It would be a power that would bubble the train sounds maybe, or something like that.
Who do you consider a role model in public service and, and what have you learned from them?
Oh, that's such an interesting one. Um, I think of honestly, I think of my, my parents, like my mom and my dad, my dad, my mom and dad started a group called Trees, Water and People here in town. They do environmental work in Central America, in, um, in, uh, indigenous lands in the United States. And then they have also done tree plantings here in Fort, in Fort Collins. And so that, that kind of environmentalism has been central to who I am, um, from a kid. And so that's why I was thankful you were asking about, about, um, about the sustainability angle and all this stuff. Cause it's really central to what, who I am and what I'm trying to do.
What's one piece of advice that you've received, but you didn't follow and now you wish you had?
That's a good one. Let's see, uh, invest in Google? No, that, let me think. Um, I think, um, that is such a good question. Man, I should have a good answer for this. I guess, um, when I was younger, I guess I wished that somebody, you know, people would tell you just like try everything. And I guess I wish that when I was a kid, I had tried more different things, like, you know, I'd be nervous about trying out for the play or I'd be nervous about, you know, trying to write a song or something like that. And I wish I had just done, done more of it and said, screw it. Like just, just put yourself out there. And if you fail, you'll look like, uh, silly for a second, but you'll, you'll, you'll enjoy it for the rest of your life. So.
What do you think Fort Collins will look like in 20 years from now?
Oh, I hope it'll look like everybody has a house over their roof over their head that they can feel like it's safe and healthy and secure and cheap. I hope it'll look like that. And I really hope, I really do hope that we've integrated in the new, the parts of Northeast Fort Collins that I'm partially going to represent into the wider trail network, the natural areas network that we need to, uh, that, 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 that serves so much of the other parts of Fort Collins so well. And so I'd hope we can, we could really like, people are getting around by bike and by bus and that there's, uh, just amazing options for people to, to live and to get around.
So, uh, I know that one of the pillars of your campaign, uh, you mentioned affordability and recreation. Can you expand on that just a little bit?
So recreation is a big one for me. I'm, I'm a soccer coach in town. Um, and I think part of that is that I think we've gotten to this place as a society where like kids get really like, they get almost like professionalized in youth sports where they're like, you gotta, you gotta be coming five days a week and we're going to get you on the travel team when you're six and you're going to be, you know, we're going to be thinking about which college you're going to get into. And it's like this rat race where it's just, there's these high barriers to entry. And so we've, since the pandemic, we've seen youth sport participation go down. And so I'd really like to see the city do what it can to promote like small neighborhood, um, uh, like sports leagues, right? Like especially these days with, it's so hard to get kids off the screens and off the computers. And so like, um, I think we just need to make it way easier for parents to like get their kids into sports without like, without having to drive an hour twice a week or whatever, right? And so kids can just walk or bike to the park and get access to really fun, like low stakes games and sports. And it could be, could be lots of things. It could be like organized sports, but it could also be like pickleball or, or martial arts or whatever. Bike, mountain biking, whatever it is, right? And just make it really easy for kids to access that because in this modern day and age, one of the things we're missing, I think a lot is just like connection with other human beings. It's so easy to stay home and, and, and watch screens. And so I think we need to provide, it's going to be more and more incumbent on the city to provide like opportunities to connect with other people in these active ways. So.
So we're, we're entering the portion of the interview now about rapid fire questions. And I'm going to, uh, give you a list of, of real quick, you just think whatever's on the top of your head.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll go from there.
I'm ready.
Favorite coffee shop?
Okay. English teacher, I gotta say Wolverine Farm because the bookstore there is one of the best bookstores I've ever seen in the United States, bar none. I don't think there's a better bookstore. And the guy, Joe over there is, is just an incredible curator of books. So I'd go there.
Favorite brewery?
I love Rally King. It's like right by where I work. We do Friday afternoon club there. It's awesome. Local community shop.
Favorite park?
Oh, that's such a hard one. Um, I love, um, I think my favorite park, well, okay, here's my real answer. It's kind of a sad one. It was Tigerland up in Tavelli as a kid. That was like my childhood, but sadly I feel like Tigerland's gone. So I'm, I'm a little devastated. I mean, if there's a replacement, but not as good. So Tigerland forever.
You were the, the second candidate to mention that park in particular. And what I told the other candidate was there is such a cool little, like when that existed, it was this giant wood fort, uh, to paint the picture for folks. And it was, you know, you had nooks and crannies and you could hide in places and there were like places you could go and like, there were different levels you could hang out in and all sorts of different obstacles you could choose. They have since redone this in the like modern safety aesthetic.
No, sorry. It's nice. It's nice, but.
It's not the same.
I'm still recovering from the loss.
Yeah. There's a, there's a park, uh, that is over, um, in Cordaleen, which is very similar to, to Tigerland. Um, and I was very reminiscent. But the thing about Tigerland made that so, uh, interesting was that there was a placard out front and you, I'm sure you remember this of all of the contributors to the park and Ace Hardware was on there, the Troxels were on there, like so many different partners and, and community that we recognize now as like, oh, your name's on a street or oh, you were the mayor or whatever else.
Yeah.
Their names were all on this placard and it took a true community effort to make that possible back in the day.
This is, this is giving me ideas. They need to like campaign on bring Tigerland back, I think.
This, make, make city parks playground wood again. That's.
I know, right?
Okay. Horse tooth hike or Pooter Trail Bike Ride?
Going to be Pooter Trail Bike Ride every time. I am obsessed with the Pooter. I love swimming all summer. It's just like, my favorite thing to do is get in the water.
Your favorite book right now?
Ooh, my favorite book right now. Um, I just read a book called Angle of Repose by Wallace, um, Stegner. That's just the incredible story of people in the West. It's awesome. So.
Somebody's trying to get ahold of you, phone call, email or text?
Text for sure. I mean, I, I, yeah, I feel like text for sure. I mean, I mean, if you have an emails worth of things to say, you can email me, mostly text. Yeah.
Early bird or night owl?
Early bird. Although I was a night owl when I was younger, but being a teacher has just beaten the night owl out of me for sure. I'm a hundred percent early bird.
Favorite nonprofit in town?
Trees, Water and People, you know, they still do amazing work. I was just down in Central America in Honduras with Sebastian, who's the, the, the executive director now. And he's, I mean, they're just doing incredible work all the time.
If you had to pick one word to describe Fort Collins, what would it be?
Hmm. I just think peaceful. You know, they had that recent survey that was like most peaceful town in the United States. It was like Fort Collins. Wasn't that, wasn't that the wording?
Yep.
And I was like, that is such a good, I do think we're the most peaceful town. It's just so calm and shady and the streets are wide and so many great water, like swimming opportunities. It's just the best. So, yeah.
Any one thing you'd change about Fort Collins if you just snapped your fingers?
Oh, y'all already know. It's, it's, it's how affordable it is, you know? We gotta have people, we gotta keep our people here, right? And that's the tough part. So that's it.
If you weren't running for office, what would you be doing this year?
Hmm. Uh, I mean, I'd be teaching for sure. And I'd be, I would have swam a lot more this summer. That's for sure. Um, but yeah, I'd be outside more.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask you about this. Having run for office, knowing that my campaign was a five-figure campaign, knowing that the amounts raised by candidates recently in the race are astronomical and ever increasing, what would you say to folks who are looking at the campaign contributions and seeing the amounts come through?
Yeah, I would say it just, um, I think it's definitely gone up, but I think it's, I really appreciate that it's still only a hundred and $50 per person. I mean, that's still a lot for a lot of people, but it's really kept it to be a small dollar campaign. Like my campaign, I think we have over 250 different contributors to the campaign, which is just, I'm really proud of that. And I'm really proud of just the kind of groundswell of grassroots support. And so, um, yeah, I think we need to keep the dollars low for sure.
Do you feel that that amount raised is commensurate with the effort that you've put in? Or do you feel like there is some other contributor to it? Like what, how do you feel? you feel that that, that came to be? Cause it's, it's when I saw the amounts that were raised by different candidates, that was a little startling for me. No, and knowing full, full context, mine was also a five-figure raise was startling when I did it at the time.
Right, right.
So there's, there's not spice here, but I'm just curious what your take on it is.
Yeah. I just think that there's so many people who in town, like I, I just have deep roots in this community and I've worked with so many people over a long period of time, right? Like on the housing stuff, I've worked, I've met so many people through the school, through my, through, through growing up here and just having so many people. And so I think it's, it's mostly just a testament to the work, right? Like calling everybody I've ever met. And then also just like having, having a base of support of people who I just know, you know, like these are, this is my city. This is who, people I grew up with. This is people I work with. This is people I, you know, have, have, you know, have made connection through, through service and activism. And so I think it's just a testament to that basically.
Do you think that that lends itself to something like publicly funded campaigns or election reform of any kind?
I totally support publicly funded campaigns. I think that's a great idea. Um, yeah, I think, I think like we're just at the beginning of a ton of things we can do to make the city more representative. So like I think the Civic Assembly has been an amazing um kind of example in democracy, right? Like we know our, our, um, our outreach um, in the city is like really unrepresentative of who the city is. And like, we know that certain people aren't showing up, right? Like if you're a single mom, like you can't make it to a five o'clock, two hour, five o'clock meeting to go give your opinion on parks, right? Like you gotta put dinner on the table. You gotta, or you're driving home to Greeley like my friend Brianna is, right? And so um, I think we gotta experiment with ways to bring more people into the process. And then there's lots of different ways to do it.
Is there anything else you'd like a listener to know about you or your campaign?
Yeah. Uh, just get involved, right? Get involved. Uh, is all I would say. I mean, I'm, I'm running to make Fort Collins more affordable, to make it uh more sustainable. And so get involved. And so you can find me, you want me to pitch my stuff now?
Yeah, feel free.
You can find me, you can find
This is your moment.
This is my moment. Yeah. You can find me at ChrisConwayFC.com, um, Chris dot Conway dot Foco at Instagram. You can find my Facebook page. Just, just look me up. And I just encourage you to, you know, regardless of um, of who you're going to support in the campaign, just, just uh, come meet your local representatives. Like I'm happy to talk to anybody at any time. My, my, my phone number is on the website, my email, just reach out. I'd love to talk about any issue that's coming up in the city. Like I've been knocking on a million doors so far. And it's just like, I meet so many smart people who have brilliant ideas all the time. And I just, I'd love to hear from you guys.
Awesome. Chris, thank you so much for being here with us on Dear Fort Collins. And we cannot wait to see you next time on the next episode with another candidate. So uh, hopefully this is a, a really informative process. And Chris, did you have fun today?
Oh yeah. Thanks for doing this. I mean, I think this is an incredible service to the city. Like it's tough. People, it's hard to get informed on like what's going on in Fort Collins. I really appreciate you doing that.
A hundred percent. Well, thank you so much for being here with us and we'll see you next time on Dear Fort Collins.